Your indulgence. The Board of County Commissioners meeting is called to order. Let the record show that on November, or December 29th at 9:00 a.m., the meeting was called to order. Would you guys join me and will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Fair.
Pledge of Allegiance, get the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present by phone.
And Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any amendments to the agenda that you'd like to bring forward?
I do not have any.
Mr. Bill?
Negative, no amendments.
Okay. I think the only thing I have is if you have your agendas, Richard Kastendick had asked to be on the agenda to address some county road signage. He is ill, so he's requested us to reschedule that at a later board meeting. So if you want to scratch that off. And then just as a point of clarification on the agenda, under Old Business is the newspaper bid opening. Today, we will only open and read those bids. We will not have any action on those. Is that your guys' understanding?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate it. I don't know if you guys', is an actual grammatically English phrase, but this is Custer County again, that's right. Thank you, Jackie. And approval of the minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I have moved to approve the minutes, or the minutes.
The minutes. And could you state which meeting minutes you want to approve?
I went through all of them. I couldn't see any glitches. I'll do a blanket approval if there's some discussion on individual, I'm thinking extended then.
Okay.
For all of them.
And would you just articulate which minutes those are? Do you have that list?
November 30th. Yes, you want me to, you want me to do it now?
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
Okay, it's November 30th, December 5th, December 6th, December 7th, and December the 14th. Those minutes I moved to approve. And I'll second that.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from November 30th, December 5th, 6th, 7th, and 14th. Any further discussion?
I would just like to compliment Kelly on a job well done. Other than that, I think they were fine.
Point well taken. That was a lot of minutes, and some of them were pretty lengthy, so.
You did a good job of taking hours and hours of discussion and deliberation for talking here.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Introductions from the audience.
Tracy Ballard, Wet Mountain Tribune.
Jackie Bubas from Sentinel.
Dallas Anderson, Airport Advisory Board.
Good.
Dennis Fixmer.
Bill Parker.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Hope your time is well spent today. Commissioner Items. Mr. Kanda.
I don't have anything significant, but I do have a few things.
Okay.
I had a good meeting with the Roden Bridge guys down at Wetmore. It was a very, very good time spent right before Christmas.
Okay.
And I got a tour of the world's greatest grader. Which was on both sides, and I'll tell you, it was, it was pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, because I spent too much time doing that, I missed seeing the, I was on my way to see the guys at the community center, and I think they figured I got lost. So I'm going to try to make that up to them when I get back, and we'll go down and have a couple of coffee with them. But I did get to see the building, and I'm impressed with the building.
Good. Good.
I know there's some problems, and I know Jay's been working a few of them. Also, from a Roden Bridge point of view, there was a request for some help slowing traffic down on Catalane, which you know about, Tom.
Yes.
And we, there are signs there, but it looks like we need an additional one towards the Transformers on the north, on the south side to warn them that there is a speed change coming from 35 down to 25, and then, and 25 across their headquarters area. So that should help them a little bit.
Okay, good.
And then finally, I did have a great chance to sit down with the airport board before we left, I was on the trip the day before, and sat through that meeting introduce myself, having a good discussion with each of the guys there, and listened to them turning the project into good, good project. It was, it was a fun time, and I look forward to working with them from here forward. That's all I have right now.
Okay, good. Commissioner Prince.
Yes, sir. I have two things, two items to discuss. One is I met with the tourism board. Unfortunately, Ms. Bubas tendered resignation after the meeting, so we'll be looking for a new secretary. It was a good meeting. I'll leave it at that. The second thing we had that I would like to discuss is we received a letter from Ms. Booth. I carbon copied or CC'd both of you on the letter and my response, just so you're aware what's going on. I don't think we need any board action. It appears to me to be a neighbor dispute, and there may be some minor legal violations, animals chasing wildlife, and that kind of thing. And Ms. Booth was requesting that we institute a leash law in the county. I told her that I personally was not in favor of that, but she was welcome to come address the BOCC if she wanted to do that. So I just left it that if she's having complaints from her neighbors, she should contact the sheriff. But a leash law in the county was not something that I would support. So those are my two commissioner items at the moment. Working with, as Bill said, we're still having some issues with the restroom, men's restroom down in Wetmore, and I think it's getting fixed probably beginning of next week. And a few other minor issues, but we're working through those. We have an elevator issue, and hopefully we'll get these ironed out. So other than that, I think I'm in good shape.
Okay, good. Thank you. I would just like to add to the dog issue, and I apologize for not carbon copying you the emails that I had sent to Ms. Booth. And I will do that today. I'll send you those, Jay, so you're, so you know what my communications were with her. I also sent an email to Sheriff Byerly, and I told both Ms. Booth and Mr. Byerly that I would be willing to go out and visit with the neighbors as well. And so that's kind of where I stand with that. Again, I'll send you those copies of those emails.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, I think, you know, I think at some point we can discuss that.
Just have me leave.
As far as the whole, and I know that, I saw that email request in county to instill some kind of ordinance about that. And I also gave her my opinion of that, being Custer County as rural as it is, a lot of, a lot of the ranchers use dogs in their everyday work, and I said personally, I didn't think I could support that, but I said we'd certainly consider that as a BOCC if she was interested in bringing that to the board. So that's where we're at, is from my standpoint, anyway.
Right.
My commissioner report, and gentlemen, if you will remember, at our November 22nd meeting, I had asked that if you can just jot those things down, you're kind of a, I'm not a big journaling person, but if you can document your activities and give those to Kelly, then she can attach those to the minutes. I have a sheet, I'll give her today, that summarizes what I've been doing through the month of December. So I'll go through those real quick, just hit some highlights. I did attend a fair board meeting December 1st, met with those folks. Obviously, we were all in attendance at the courthouse security meeting. I've also been involved in conducting the interviews for the extension position. Met with Mike Halpin, talking about courthouse security, so we're trying to get some speed up to get that door put in, along with a couple of other things. I did attend the Custer County School Board meeting on December 12th. Met with Mr. Paylor on the 14th of December to talk about some affordable housing for teachers. And then, as you gentlemen both are aware of, because we were all there, we attended a meeting with CDOT, had, I thought, a very productive meeting with those folks as well. Then we did have a conference call pertaining to the hiring of an extension agent on December 15th, and we discussed those four applicants. We currently have four people that have applied. There were seven that applied initially. CSU rejected three of those applications because they did not meet the minimum qualifications. So we have four people that we anticipate interviewing in person on December 16th in Pueblo, and then, sorry, January 16th. And then January 17th, we will be interviewing those folks here in Custer County, and the time and location of that is yet to be determined, so.
Are those going to be open meetings or closed?
Uh, I had a conversation, the question was, gentlemen, if you didn't hear that, are those meetings going to be open or closed? I had a conversation with Bill Nobles, the area director for extension for Southern Colorado yesterday, and he said that they would be open meetings, they would not be public forum. So people are welcome to sit in in an audience mode, but they just, CSU does not allow questions from the audience. So it will be the committee functioning and anybody, they were hoping to, because of some constraints of time, to have 20 to 30 people in the audience, so we'll see how that goes. He wa, he didn't give us any direction as how to proceed to inform people of that meeting yet, so we're waiting. He, he said he would get some guidelines put together after January 1 for us, so that's where we stand on the extension hiring process.
Sir, do you mind, are you okay if I attend at December 16th? January 16th, you got me doing it now. January 16th meeting?
Yes. I do not see a problem with that. Mr. Prince, I think they'll be fine. It's at the regional headquarters in Pueblo, so I will indicate to Mr. Nobles that your desire to attend that as well, yes.
That's great, thank you.
You bet. December 16th, I attended an OEM meeting over at the search and rescue building, their monthly meeting. They got a lot of stuff going on. They rolled out their new map for coverage on, on their calls with RYE, Pueblo, Custer County, and that was, that, actually, that project's been in the works since 2015. So they, they had that map done, and there's a, I think, going to be a lot of clarification of who's going to cover what emergency and what the order is of contacting somebody else if, if one of those agencies are not available, so. And I did have some fun this month. December 19th, I got to mix some concrete up and, and patch the hole down in the basement by the mop sink. That was nice, to get some coveralls on and mix mud and do that stuff. So we, we're making progress with that. I'll give you just a quick update where we're at with those two sinks. I'm going to build a privacy wall, and I will do that personally, just because I enjoy that kind of stuff for the basement mop sink. And then I'm going to build a two-sided knee-high wall, or three feet, or whatever, around the mop sink in the annex building, primarily to avoid such a trip hazard over there in that meeting room. So that, that'll happen today or tomorrow. And then I've contacted a handyman to, I'm going to give him a tour this afternoon to see if we can't get the plumbing fixtures, put on those mop sinks, and get that kind of finished up, so. Right now, neither one of those sinks are usable because we don't have any fixtures on them. And then on the 19th of December, I spent about an hour and a half on a webinar hosted by an HR Green Company on community broadband. It was kind of an interesting webinar. Most of their comments were directed towards larger municipalities, but they did talk about small rural areas in Colorado and, and kind of what they, it's just a company that comes in basically and advises communities on how they can approach broadband, so I thought it was time well spent. And then on the 21st of December, we had an informal department head meeting to go over the personnel policy. I was at that meeting for a little while, then I left to attend the airport meeting on Thursday, Mr. Bill, and I'm looking at Dallas Anderson, I'm giving him the stink eye of, Lynn Legree and I went down to attend the airport advisory meeting, but we were not aware that.
I was wondering where you guys were. I thought that he put the change me notice out.
Yeah, and apparently, we, neither Lynn nor I got that, and I talked with Dallas about that, so I've already tortured him. But, so I did leave that personnel policy meeting for, for an hour, hour and a half, and so I did miss the majority of that meeting, but I talked with Kelly Camper about that. And I think the general consensus, don't you, Kelly, that was a good meeting, and they went through the entire policy, correct?
Yeah.
So they've gone through the first revision of that personnel policy, and I'm sure that's being revised, and then I'm sure they'll meet again.
They're going to come back, aren't they? That's the plan.
Yeah, it is. Do you guys have another meeting scheduled to go over it again, or not?
We don't yet. We were, what we left it at is that Brenda made the changes on it, and we were going to look and just make sure all the changes got made. I was going to send it out to everybody, and they could look at it again, and if everybody's good with it, then we'll present it to you guys.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, did you hear that, Bill? It will come back to the BOCC, no problem there.
Right, I wanted to make sure they're happy with the, they thought.
Right, they're going to, each department head's going to review that newly revised personnel policy and see if there's any other issues that they want to address, and then when they come to consensus, then they'll bring that final draft to the Board of County Commissioners. And that was it for my report. I'm going to give my hard copy to Kelly, and I'd ask her if she can attach that to the minutes. And again, would ask that you gentlemen kind of do the same thing, so we can get that on record. That way, if somebody wanted to know, hey, what's your commissioners, what were they doing last month, then at least we have a record of that. So I would ask your indulgence there.
You're, you don't want, I don't, we don't need to repeat the meetings that we've been in anyway publicly, right? I mean, you just want to know kind of things that are going on in the background, sound like.
Well.
Otherwise, we might as well just document every day, right?
Well, if I did anything significant on a given day, then I just jotted it down. December 2nd, attended such and such a meeting. December 6th, was on a conference call, that kind of thing. It doesn't have to be really detailed, but.
No, but I just want to be consistent. Are you documenting the meetings that you go to, that we like, like the judicial?
Yes.
Strategic meetings?
Yes.
If you're documenting all that, then Jay and I need to do the same thing, and we're going to look like we were at.
Right. Yeah, and you're welcome to ask Kelly to look at mine, just so you can see what I did. It's entirely up to you guys to do whatever you'd like, but, yeah, I just, I just thought if I do anything as a commissioners of any significance, whether it's, I even put down the BOCC meetings, just so we had a record of what we did. That was kind of my intent, so. You're welcome to look at mine if you want. If not, you know, just jot down what days you did anything significant, and, and just give a copy of that to, to Kelly, was my intent, anyway. Commissioner Prince, you have input on that?
No, I'm fine with it. I, I did not do it. I do remember you asking for it. I was neglecting that, and, but I will get that to her immediately.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
So that'll be attached, Tom, on the minutes from the last meeting of the month?
Uh, yes, that would, that was my thinking, that we would just do that at the last meeting of the month.
Because this is a December commissioner report, so I'll probably put it on the last, last date.
Just so people know where to look for it.
Right, yeah. I just, I entitled mine December Commissioner Report, Tom Flower, and we went down through my calendar, basically, and, and just printed out a copy and gave it to Kelly. We good to move on, gentlemen?
Sounds good. We have a press call.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Items. Counselor.
I've got three things. One is actually a question for Jay. It just occurred to me, several months ago, I wrote a letter to, I think it was San Isabel Electric about those wires, exposed wires down at the Wetmore Community Center. A gentleman had called me, and I asked Donna to forward that. Jay, have you talked to that person about those wires?
Yeah, I did. And I also had, I went down to the community center with Nan and Alden, and the wires are not an issue anymore, apparently. So I told him that it appears that the folks down at Wetmore were satisfied with the way the wires, apparently the wires are underground, they were buried, there were some old wires hanging that were just cut away.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure that had been taken care of.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, the, on the personnel policy, just, this just falls in the category of showing I do stuff outside the meetings. Kelly had asked me to review the personnel policy for any legal issue, so I did go through it, made a few suggestions on that, that she took to the committee meeting. And then the last thing I want to talk about is the intergovernmental agreement I had drafted between the Board of County Commissioners and the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District for use of one of the buildings there to house a fire engine. And Commissioner Flower called to my attention yesterday, in that proposed IGA, I had referred to that building as a hangar. I touched base with Dallas last night, and Dallas said, no, it's not a hangar, it should be referred to as the Operations Maintenance and Service Building. So I revised the IGA. I'm not sure when we're going to be, I think, I asked Kelly this morning, and she said that the Fire Protection District has not acted on it yet. Or I asked Brenda, I guess, I'm not sure if I said ask.
I knew who you meant.
Okay. And Brenda said there were some other issues on that, that you had some input on. I don't know if that's something you wanted to talk about or not.
Well, when she, when Terry brought that in yesterday, I just asked her if they had got the fire truck purchased, and she said, no, that they were still working on that with the homeowners, because now the homeowners, they were kind of, they were supposed to be providing most of the money, I think, and that's, so they don't have a fire truck yet.
Okay, so this IGA will just be pending, depending on whether or not they get the truck, I guess.
I guess.
Well, my thought was, if I can interject here.
Sure.
And I had set in on those advisory committee meetings down at the airport, kind of when this first came to surface, was that they were definitely going to try to get some local buy-in from those homeowner associations. I know there's been a little bit of hesitation about how much, or who's going to pay what. I did speak with a couple of the board members on the Fire Protection District, and, and they personally felt like they could not afford to purchase that fire truck outright at this point, and of course, they're looking for some grant funding as well. I have not talked to Dave Tonzing recently about that, but he thought he had an individual that would maybe purchase that fire truck, that Class 8 pumper, and then get paid back for that over time. So I, I personally thought, because we've got all the players in place, that, that in January, we should give that IGA some consideration, whether they have the fire truck purchased or not, was where I was coming from. Wouldn't hurt for us.
It ought to be considered whether we, they buy it now or not, as anything like, it needs to be done, and it will be at some point.
Yeah, that was my thought, Bill, that, you know, whether it's January or June, they get that pumper purchased, we can still enter into that agreement and, and then move forward from there, you know, so. The problem with the, the board members that I spoke to said that they already had their, their budgetary process in place, and their long-term plans, and it did not include this satellite site down there at the airport. This was kind of brought on after the fact, and so they were just a little hesitant to commit that kind of money, when they really hadn't planned for that or budgeted for that. So, and I understood their, their point about that.
What, what board was that?
That was, as not a board, I spoke to two board members from the Fire District.
I just, I would just point out, then, that as far as the IGA goes, whether it's approved in January, even if they don't start using the building till a lot later, it's not going to cost them a whole lot in rent, since the rent is $1 a year. I don't think they're going to mind paying from January 1, regardless of whether they're using it or not. And those were the only issues.
Reach into the sock for that.
Yeah, well, I've got a firm commitment that an individual in the audience today will pay that, my golly, so we've got that covered. And I did notice, I missed it the first time I read that IGA. That IGA is scheduled, I believe, from 2018 to 2032, so.
Right.
That dollar has to be split out by however many years that is.
It's a dollar, it's a dollar a year.
Oh, a dollar a year.
I'm only willing to pay for one.
All right, so that, my commitment, my firm commitment from a person was only for the first year, so.
For the second.
We'll, we'll get that covered, but, yeah, I, I kind of agree with Counselor that we've got it done, and everybody's up to speed on it, I think, and so I think we should consider that at our next meeting, and, and then it's in place if that's what the board decides.
Go ahead and make a motion now, and just go ahead and approve it. I've read the resolution, I thought it was fine. This'll just, I know we could approve it now, I'm suggesting, and once we acquire the fire truck, we'll just be up and ready to go.
And with all due respect, sir, I, it's on the, the January 9th agenda, I believe, might be the 10th, but those people may want to be here. I would prefer to, to wait and, and do that after the 1st of the year.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Also, the resolution is actually numbered, is Resolution 18-01, so should be done in 2018, or else I have to change the number.
And we wouldn't want to task the Counselor with that. Even though he does do work outside of the commissioner meetings that we're now aware of, I wasn't before that, so I'm glad he mentioned that. Anything else, Counselor?
That's it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Ms. Gaddy, Administrative Assistant, do you have anything?
I don't today.
Okay. Then we'll move on to Old Business. We have one item today, and that is the opening and reading of the sealed bids from the newspapers for us to take action on in January in selecting a newspaper of records. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Counselor Smith.
I have two bids here. There aren't any dates on them, so I'm just going to ask Kelly, choose left or right. I have one in each hand.
Left.
Okay.
May I ask a question before we do that?
Certainly, go ahead.
I asked Brenda this question, but I just want to, for the record, both newspapers did submit their proposals in a timely manner, is that correct? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. They were turned in prior to the deadline.
That sounds right. That's all I've heard about.
And thank you, yeah, thank you for asking that.
Sure.
Okay, the one that I'll open first, then, is from the Wet Mountain Tribune. It's in an envelope, addressed to Board of County Commissioners, Custer County, legal notice publication bid. I'll get all these papers opened up here before I start reading them. This is their three copies.
Okay. We'll attach these two minutes as well.
I will give one to Commissioner Flower, since he's present. I'll read the formal bid aloud at this time. It's dated December 14, 2017, addressed to you Commissioners, Kanda, Flower, and Prince. As per your request of November 17, the Wet Mountain Tribune is pleased to offer proposed publication costs for statutory and non-statutory legal notices for calendar year 2018. The bids are based on customary and standardized typographical measurements of a column measuring 10 pikas in width, parentheses, approximately 1 and 11 sixteenths inches, end parenthesis, utilizing the standard six-point typographical type size, parentheses, and please be apprised that the per-line reference refers to the rather arcane typographical measurement of 12 lines per inch, end parenthesis. Next paragraph, statutory legal notices, 25 cents per line. This remains considerably less than the maximum rate of 44 cents per line mandated by the Colorado State Legislature approximately 15 years ago. Based on the Tribune's current circulation, this rate equates to a per-household penetration cost of decimal 000109 dollars, or, I guess that's what it stands for. Non-statutory legal notices, 32 cents per line. As you know, non-statutory legal notices are typically paid by outside third parties and do not involve tax dollars. The 32 cent rate equates to a per-household penetration cost of decimal 000139 dollars. Attached you will find our most recent sworn statement of ownership as required annually by the U.S. Postal Service in order to maintain our second-class/paid periodical mailing status. For calendar year 2016, our average total paid circulation was 2,299. Using the Sentinel's own sworn statement of ownership, the Tribune's circulation is between three and five times greater based on the various circulation categories, parentheses, in-county, out-of-county, and newsstand sales, end parenthesis. Additionally, based on data from the U.S. Census Bureau and the Colorado Press Association, the Tribune's in-county household penetration rate is greater than 70%, a figure that is more than double the statewide average. As you may be aware, the Tribune is Custer County's oldest extent commercial business venture, having been established more than 134 years ago. We pride ourselves on our adherence to traditional journalistic practices through our trained paid staff members, through our instilled practices of fairness, honesty, accuracy, and acknowledging errors when they do occur, and of being a voice to every citizen of Custer County regardless of their political, religious, ethnic, or socioeconomic status. Moreover, the Tribune has been a member of the Colorado Press Association since the Tribune's establishment in 1883. We consider the publication of legal notices to be one of our greatest responsibilities, and we remain up to date on any state requirements regarding legal notices. Also, the county of Custer is the only governmental body that does not publish legal notices in the Tribune. We remain the newspaper of record for the towns of West Cliff and Silver Cliff, Colorado Water Courts, the Colorado Brand Board, the Colorado Election Commission, and various other state agencies, in addition to every special district headquartered in Custer County or providing direct services to its citizens. We look forward to our continued positive working relationship with the B.O.C.C. and the various county offices. Naturally, if you have further questions or concerns, you know my door is always open. Sincerely, Jim Little, publisher. And enclosed is the statement of ownership, management, and circulation from the United States Postal Service. So I'll give this to Kelly. Next, I'll open, have an envelope from the Sangre de Cristo Sentinel, hand-delivered, December 11, 2017. This one is dated November 11, 2017, Custer County Commissioners, regarding the bid for statutory and non-statutory legal publications for 2018. Dear Commissioners, as per your bid request letter of November 27, 2017, for legal publication bid for 2018, the following is our bids according to your bid specifications for the three categories of notices. Legal notice or advertisement, 15 cents per line for the first insertion, and 13 cents per line for subsequent insertions. Privately-supported legal notice or advertisement, 30 cents per line for all insertions. Publicly-supported legal notice or advertisement, 15 cents per line for the first insertion, and 13 cents per line for subsequent insertions. Quoted rates are prorated as per statute for other column widths and type sizes.
Okay, Brenda?
Yes.
Would you, you got, you cut out on this end on the second, right after the legal notice, 15 cents a line, what were the next two?
The three bids, I'll do it again. Legal notice or advertisement, 15 cents per line for the first insertion, and 13 cents per line for subsequent insertions. Next category is privately-supported legal notice or advertisement, 30 cents per line for all insertions. And the third category is publicly-supported legal notice or advertisement, 15 cents per line for the first insertion, and 13 cents per line for subsequent insertions. Quoted rates are prorated as per statute for other column widths and type sizes. Of note in your bid letter, bids will be considered based on price for the specifications cited herein. Also, please note that the Sentinel has run the county's legal notices in larger type than legally required for easier reading whenever possible, at no cost to the county. We will continue to do so if awarded the bid. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to bid on Custer County's legal publications and look forward to a great partnership. Signed, George Gramlich, Managing Editor, the Sangre de Cristo Sentinel. And I will put this back in the envelope and pass this over to Kelly.
Did they submit anything on their publications, how many households it goes to?
No, what I read is what was submitted.
All right. Gentlemen, were you able to hear?
Can I, can I ask a couple of questions or make a request, if I may? I'd like to ask Brenda if it would be possible for when we make a decision on which paper would be the official paper, what is the actual cost that we have spent last year? And what would the cost be to the county that if we did both newspapers? I'm still hung up on saturation. I know we're not going to discuss this right now. So I'd like to just get some more facts before this decision is actually made. Brenda, is that something I could ask you to do, if you wouldn't mind, please?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kanda?
I'm good, I got it.
Okay, all right, perfect. Counselor, thank you for that, appreciate it. Both newspapers for their timely submission for their sealed bids, and we will act on that in January, and I can't read those agendas from here. Do you know, Brenda, which meeting? Is it the 9th or the 10th?
The 9th.
The 9th, so we will act on those on January the 9th, gentlemen, per our agendas for that meeting.
Thank you.
You bet. We'll move on to new business, review the vouchers. Do you want to give Donna a holler?
Did she give you?
She did, yes, I've got it right here.
Okay.
And maybe we don't, unless there's questions.
Right.
Let's see if there are, first of all.
And I might be able to answer them too.
Okay, all right. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns about the submitted vouchers for the month of December?
I have one. Go ahead, I apologize, I didn't realize.
Go ahead first, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. It's hard when I can't see you. I didn't know your mouth was about to open. Okay, the only one that I have an issue with, not an issue, a question on, is I noticed there is a $1,750 voucher for the Tourism Board for contract labor, and I'm trying to understand what contract labor does the Tourism Board have? I sit on that committee, and I'm, because I've only been to one meeting, but I have no idea what that is, and I was wondering if maybe somebody.
Yeah, Jackie Bubus and Brenda Gaddy both confirmed that that was website expense?
That was for the whole year.
For the year.
Is that right, Jackie?
No, it's broken up either quarterly or monthly, and there was a certain number of payments for that whole contract.
There was actually two. There was, there was a payment to the usual.
To Vista Works.
Vista Works, and there was also a payment to Greg Smith.
Yeah, Greg Smith was doing some editing of the website, so.
And I believe that's the amount that he's talking about, just the one.
Okay, yeah, the amount that you mentioned, Jay, is for Greg Smith for editing that he'd done on the website.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Anything else, Commissioner Prince?
No, the rest of them I thought were fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I have this, Bill, again. I did have the same question on tourism, and that cleared that up, but what's the, and this is just the process piece, I guess. It says, if you scroll down, it's funding, and it's lodging slash tourism fund. What does the tourism fund have to do with lodging? That's where the money comes from, the lodging tax? Know what it is? So that's what it was billed to, right?
Right. I believe that lodging tax supports tourism.
I think that's earmarked for that specifically.
I did have a question about the contract labor on that, so that's been clarified, thank you.
Okay, you bet. And then I had, anything else, Commissioner Kanda?
Good with all the rest of them.
Okay, yeah. I had a couple of questions. I think I had those answered satisfactorily yesterday. One was pertaining to, I think the amount was $974 to Air Gas, and so I spoke with Gary Hyde at Roden Bridge, and I spoke with Donna Hobbie, and I spoke with the gentleman, the manager at Air Gas in Canyon City, his name is Neil. The county leases and/or rents a total of 17 cylinders, and that $974 was for rent for those, I'm sorry, it was not for rent. He looked up the invoices, and it was to fill those cylinders. Some of those cylinders, I think there were nine, eight or nine of those cylinders were filled, so that's what that money was for. Just a quick background on that, the county has basically nine of those cylinders on a lifetime rental agreement or lease agreement that Air Gas no longer offers that. The longest contract they offer now is five years, but those are grandfathered in, so he said, absolutely, you do not want to veer away from that lifetime lease, because he said that is saving you a ton of money. And so Gary and I talked about making sure that the bottles that we do have, if they are currently not on the long-term lease, which now is five years with Air Gas, that we move those over to that five-year lease. So I will pursue that or bill as a point of contact. If you want to be involved in that, I'm fine with that as well.
Yeah, I'll do it.
And those, that whole process now is handled out of the Pueblo Air Gas office. They really don't do that in Canyon City, but I think if they are, and he couldn't tell me what the lease, term of the lease was on those bottles, but if it's not, we need to try to get that to that five-year thing.
How many bottles were it, Tom?
There's 17 cylinders altogether.
But what was, was it a questionable, like, seven things around here?
Would you say that again, please?
You were mentioning, you didn't know what the term of the lease was, how many months or years or whatever it is. How many bottles were questionable?
Nine. Eight of those are on that lifetime lease, which they actually terminated that whole program in the late 80s, 1980s. So we're, we're a leg up on that whole situation for those nine bottles, and it can start to run into a lot of money. But the 974, to get back to my point, was filling, I believe he said, eight of those So that would just be a normal operating cost there. Anything else on the vouchers, gentlemen?
Not for me. I'll move that we approve the vouchers as submitted. Second thing.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the submitted vouchers. Any further discussion? Let me just tell you quickly, gentlemen, you may or may not know this, I can't remember, we do have inked stamps, so we will not have to hand-sign those. We can stamp those checks if we so choose from here on out.
Cool, that's good.
Yeah, so that'll be a big time saver. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the vouchers, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. Vouchers have been approved. I haven't initialed them yet.
Better do that.
I'll turn the floor over to Kelly Camper for liquor license renewal for the Alpine Lodge.
All right, so this is their yearly liquor license renewal for their 3-2 beer. Alpine Lodge actually has two liquor licenses. They have a tavern liquor license and a three, no, that's the lodge, we're on the Alpine. This is for their tavern license, for the restaurant. And I've got all their fees. It's $100 to the county, $500 to the Department of Revenue, and the sheriff's report that I got, there were no, there was nothing on the sheriff's report, and so it just needs your approval.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move that we approve the renewal of the Alpine Lodge liquor license. That's the restaurant one, right?
Yes, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion on the Alpine Lodge liquor license renewal? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Liquor license has been approved for the Alpine Lodge. Thank you, ma'am. Next is the liquor license renewal for the lodge at San Isabel. Ms. Camper?
Okay, this one is the one. Okay, this one is the one that they have two liquor licenses, the restaurant and a three-two. And this is their three-two renewal. And same thing, it's a yearly one. They pay $11750 to the county and, oh, he made those out wrong. 11750 to the state and 15 to the county. And the sheriff's report shows nothing on it either. It was kind of a thick sheriff's report, and so I was, I was kind of concerned about that, but apparently they have to put, they had a few calls from there that didn't have to do with the lodge.
So they had to include that, huh?
Yeah, so they had to include that. So it just needs your approval also.
Gentlemen, were you able to hear all that?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll move that we approve the liquor license renewal for the lodge at San Isabel.
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. Been moved and seconded to approve the liquor license. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Liquor license has been approved. Thank you, ma'am. You'll contact them about the checks and get that sorted out. I think he had the checks reversed. Is that correct, the amounts? Was that the problem?
No, he had, he has them both made out to the county.
Okay.
So he's just going to have to change one.
Yeah, so we'll have him rewrite a check, one to the county and one to the state.
Okay.
Our next item of business is a transfer of funds from capital improvement, County General, or sorry, capital improvement to the airport advisory, or to the airport, actually, yeah. Ms. Camper?
This is a transfer, Dallas, this was for the check for the pump, right?
The new fuel dispenser installation.
Right. And so when they originally did it, they didn't take it out of the airport fund, it actually came out of, came out of the general fund, or the capital...
No, the check was written against the airport fund, fuel fund, repairs and maintenance. And it was supposed to have been written against the county capital improvement.
Capital improvement, yeah. So this is a transfer of $8,850 from capital improvement fund to the airport fund, to reimburse that airport fund.
Yeah. You've already paid that.
Is it my understanding that this is really an accounting issue to get our books and records straight?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay. I move we accept the transfer, and I'll second it.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's been moved and seconded to accept the transfer of $8,850 from capital improvement fund to the airport fund. Further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Transfer has been approved.
I just wanted to interject, since there was an issue about that additional amount that we were billed from Eaton Sales and Service, I did write to them, to the gentleman, and indicated that the Board of County Commissioners would be willing to sit down and discuss a negotiated settlement of the disputed amount. I haven't gotten any response back to that letter yet.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. I believe Brenda is calling Virginia, our treasurer, to come in and handle our next item of business. Good morning, ma'am, how are you?
You're just all by yourself?
I am. You can rub the phone if you want, because the other two gentlemen are on the telephone. Mr. Hill just entered the room to deal with the transfer of funds, and I will turn the floor over to her.
Okay, I'm going to transfer, I'm requesting a transfer of $447.88 from County General to Conservation Trust. That's for interest, that's a requirement that's...
I don't think you can phone, Tom.
Okay, hold on.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, we'll move a chair over for her, hold on just a minute, gentlemen. Yeah, anytime you can't hear, just give us a holler.
Thank you. Okay, I'm requesting $447.88 be transferred from County General to Conservation Trust. That's a requirement of interest payment from County General into the Conservation Trust.
I will move we transfer the funds of $447.88 out of County General to Conservation Trust Fund.
Okay, before you do, I'll second that.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to transfer said funds of $447.88. Any discussion about that?
Just tell me why, I missed that part.
That's an auditor's requirement, they have to get their interest for their money that's been sitting in their account.
Okay, I got it.
Commissioner Prince, anything?
I'm fine with it, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the transfer of $447.88 from County General to Conservation Trust Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion opposed? Motion carries. That transfer has been approved. I think she has another one.
Yes, I have a transfer of $125,000 from lieu of tax to County General to pay bills.
Okay, and that was 125, 125,000 even?
Correct.
Okay.
I move we accept that transfer, and I'll second it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Been moved and seconded to approve the transfer of 125,000 from payment in lieu of taxes account to County General. Further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Those two transfers have been approved, ma'am. Thank you for coming over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Happy New Year, Virginia.
You too.
That's probably the last time she'll ever come and ask for a transfer.
This year.
This year.
That's the last time this year, won't it?
That's right. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that. Next item of business is to take action on the sheriff's contract with the town of Silvercliff. You guys, gentlemen, should have a copy of that.
Yes.
And I'm going through my stack to pull that out as well. As you can see, there are several signatories required on that, including the Board of County Commissioners. So Chair would entertain a motion to authorize the Board of County Commissioners to sign this contract.
I'll move.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to sign the contract with the Sheriff's Department and the town of Silvercliff. Any discussion, gentlemen?
It's a quick question, the date is for December, when is it actually effective?
First day of January, second line of that paragraph.
So it says it's entered into on...
Yeah, and what do you think, Counselor, should we have them change that date? Well, you know what, I think there's already a signature on there, Leela Craven signed that as of January 4th, so we're subsequent signatories to that, so my guess is that date probably should stand.
That's fine, I would just suggest when it's signed, if it is signed by the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, you just put today's date after your signature.
Okay. Would that be acceptable, gentlemen?
No, that's the date that it's effective in, right?
The effective date is January 1.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, it's what's in the paragraph, yep. I'm good with it.
Okay, good. I'll move we sign the contract with the sheriffs and the town of Westcliff, or Silvercliff, sorry.
I think that was moved, it was.
Sorry, I apologize.
I have a question, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I don't know if the sheriff is there or not, but is the fee that Silvercliff is paying, is that the same as last year, or is that a different amount?
I believe it is, yes.
I couldn't hear that.
Yes, Ms. Gady thought that was the same amount as last year.
That sounds fine. That sounds fine. I knew that Westcliff was not altered, so I just wanted to make sure Silvercliff wasn't, was treated.
Further questions, comments, discussion?
Are they, get back to your aspect that you brought up, is it the same price for Westcliff? Oh, gosh, no. It's, let me think, yeah, it's five or six times higher in Westcliff than in Silvercliff. I don't remember exactly what the Westcliff number was, but somewhere I'm thinking it's 30 or 40,000 dollars a quarter.
Okay. What I thought, curious.
If I remember correctly, just FYI, there are more calls being made in Westcliff than Silvercliff pursuant to the sheriff, and also the tax base is a little higher in Westcliff than is in Silvercliff, so my last discussions with Westcliff is that they felt it was equitable and they were fine with it.
And with your patience, gentlemen, Ms. Gady is researching that right now.
Let's see.
And Westcliff has more area to cover.
Annual fee of 33,000.
33,000, gentlemen, for, that's an annual fee for Westcliff.
That's three times higher.
Yes.
I know it was considerably higher.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of signing the sheriff's contract with the town of Silvercliff, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. I will sign that right now, gentlemen, and we will forward that on. And as instructed by counsel, I have dated that 12/29/17. Our next item of business is a letter of authorization from the OEM.
I've read that letter, I think it's fine, I believe it's something that's done on an annual basis.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, I move that we approve it. I'd like to use the letter of authorized OEM to...
Thank you, gentlemen. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the letter of authorization, sign the letter of authorization for the OEM, which basically states that Cindy Howard will have authorization to sign those reimbursement requests. Any discussion about that? The document requires myself as Chair and Donna Hobbie as our CFO to sign those documents. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of signing the letter of authorization, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Tell me again what it gives her authorization?
It gives her authorization to sign all reimbursement requests and other documents that may be required by federal and state agencies to receive funds from the EMPG grant. I'll hand this to you so you can get it. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that. We have a recycling agreement with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments for 2018. Gentlemen, do you have that document?
Yes.
Okay, it does require, ask for all three of our signatures, so if you two gentlemen would follow up with that when you get back in town, I would appreciate that. I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong document, I apologize. This document requests the Chairman's signature and the clerk to the Board of County Commissioners for in a testament.
It also is looking for a director, right? I have acted in that capacity previously, and I would be happy to do it again if you so choose. I go to the meetings and discuss recycling, that's my handle recycling, is one of my duties.
Okay.
And you've got a couple of junkyard dogs down there. Yeah, we do.
Shall we handle those two things separately, gentlemen, or do you want to include the appointment in the signing of that document?
Go ahead, I can do them both.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion then to sign the agreement as well as appoint a director to that board.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, I would move that we sign the agreement and appoint Commissioner Prince to serve as our director.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to sign the agreement and appoint Commissioner Prince as a director. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. I will sign that right now, and then we'll insert Commissioner Prince's name as the director. Just so that we can move on, will you fill that information out at the bottom?
Oh.
Thank you.
Yes. I'll have to get to this table.
Okay, thank you.
I don't...
Where were the gentlemen? Did she hurt you, Shannon?
She hurt me.
We had a little accident in the commissioner room. Apparently Sheriff Bondi was standing where he wasn't supposed to be. Good morning, sir.
How are you?
Good, good, good. We good there, Ms. Brenda?
Yep, I just wanted to make sure we had two of them.
Okay. And then I have a document here, it's not on the agenda, I wasn't aware that this was in that stack of documents, from Steve Bowen. Ms. Brenda, are you?
Uh...
This is asking for three signatures for the fire mitigation.
That was something we approved, and we were waiting on the letterhead.
Okay.
So...
Good point, it's already been approved?
Yep.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'm speaking of a document from Steve Bowen, the State Disaster Recovery Manager, regarding the post wildfire flash flood and alert and notification. This was approved earlier, and we had not printed that document and signed it because we were waiting for the new county letterhead which we received, and so this is the document that asked for all three of our signatures, so I will sign it today. If you gentlemen will sign it when you return, it's already been approved.
What was the title of that, what was the fourth one?
Post wildfire flash flood and alert and notification.
Okay, I got it, good.
We'll leave that with you, Brenda, is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you want to meet with Ms. Gady and ask her about that document and sign it, then she will forward that on. Do you need that, or you want me to put it back in this pile?
Um, no.
Okay. I believe that concludes our agenda items. We'll move into the public comment section of our meeting, gentlemen. If you cannot hear, please indicate, and we'll remedy that. Any?
Before you do that, Tom, on the public comment, I don't know why it's not on here, but we all agree that the public has the right to comment on these items as we go through them. It's not stated on here anymore.
Yeah, and we probably need to correct that. Ms. Gady, is that?
Yeah, I noticed that, and I need to, I'll just need to add that, Tom.
It wasn't anybody, it's either they can't discuss.
Right. And we have allowed for a couple of questions as they arose. We went through the agenda. If the audience has anything else about specifically agenda items that we did miss, let's do that first then. Just general comment from the public, Dallas, or did you want to speak to an agenda item?
Well, it's something that was mentioned early on in meetings.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the request, well, maybe I ought to rephrase that. I think maybe a suggestion from a citizen that the county consider a leash law within the county.
Yes.
I might surprise you the fact that Colorado State has a very comprehensive leash law that would override anything that a county would pass. I was schooled on that leash law when I was in training for RTD in Denver and also for Loomis Fargo. And I trained with them. And they schooled us on those leash laws so that we'd know our rights in the state of Colorado if we had come with altercation with a pet of any sort, dog, cat, monkey, dog, goat, elephant. So the leash law is in effect for the state of Colorado.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Yeah, and technically, and certainly will accept those public comments, Dallas, not a problem. That was not an item that we were going to vote on today anyway. It was, it just came up through commissioner report. So I think we were within our own direction of allowing public comment on items that were to be voted on. So Bill, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Other public comment? All hearts clear? Yes, ma'am?
I had a question on, you guys put marking down J as the OEM director on. Is that not something that's done every January? Or should it be done in January instead of in December? Or I just, because all appointments are made in January, and I just didn't want that to be out of order. I don't know.
I think in the past, they have done that, and then they appoint in Jan, officially appoint in January.
Well, then he would still be the director.
The director right now.
For now, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a, you know, just a nitpicky technicality thing. Sorry.
Brenda, is that document, and you have it, I believe, or did we get it back?
I guess we got it back, didn't we?
Okay.
Probably a really good point. Probably we can agree at this point, but actually make it official when we do the appointments. That's a good point I hadn't thought of.
Yeah, side of the document itself, the agreement was probably not an issue. It was just the appointment of you as the director. So.
It's appropriate.
Brenda, can we add that on the?
I believe that's just a part of the annual appointments.
Right. So in January, we will.
We can do the blanket approval of the appointment.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. All right, good point. Thank you. Anything else from the audience or Ms. Gady?
No.
Ms. Camper? No, good. Okay. Hearing no further business, there is no executive session scheduled for this morning. So with that, at 10:15, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time. I hope you were able to hear everything. I thought it worked good from our end.